He didn't have to do it because he's a little raspy. Are we on time? All right, so it's seven P M. I'd like to call the November third, twenty twenty five Board of Selectment meeting to order. Please join me in rising for the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have, all three members are actually present, although Mr. Dunn is, has joined us via Zoom because he's at home a little under the weather, didn't want to infect everybody here in the room. So, and Mrs. Carr and myself are here in room one thirty-three at Town Hall. Next on our agenda is public comment. Who do we have, Cynthia?
Pam Kraus to Cove Road. First and foremost, on behalf of our group, stop the Brookfield compressor station expansion, thank you for the efforts of the past and current appeal for an unfair denial. For three petitions for adjudicatory hearing where that saved the sound, attorneys are filing an appeal tomorrow, and we know and appreciate your filing as well. Tonight, I just want to share some background because in advocating for the town to go forward on this issue, we've not had the opportunity to share some details of the ins and outs of dealing with DEEP over the past two years. It's been brutal. The current denial is totally consistent with the improper and prejudicial behavior to the public. I say this coming from a background of experience as a permitting regulator and a code enforcement officer and a very large environmental agency in Florida. This was some time ago, but the workings of proper administrative practices and procedures have not changed since the Administrative Procedure Act and the federal government was promulgated in nineteen forty-six. So here goes, and this is just a sampling. There are many instances of what one might consider public mistreatment. Of course, you are aware Commissioner Dykes is unresponsive. She did not respond to any of our outreach. Accordingly, we proceeded with DEEP's own processes. We started using their form for a file review in Hartford. We used the permit application number, set up an appointment as required on their form, showed up to the basement file archives on time. One problem, the files were produced were only for the compressors that already exist at the site. How many years ago? No current files. Of course, there is no way we could have known anything different because we followed their own procedure. Sound familiar? We called the air department and had to return on another occasion to review the current files outside of the published file review procedures. Whether they were complete was questionable as there was no record of meetings, phone calls, et cetera, with Iroquois. On another occasion, after going through another file review, we were told we had to make a FOIA request. Their FOIA instructions said it could take ten to twelve weeks or more to produce. At that point, our state Senator Harding helped us. On another FOIA request last May, after we heard there was going to be an intent to issue the permit, we would not, we did not receive the permits, the, the files until October, five months later. Sierra Club in April hired a highly qualified expert attorney engineer, formerly high ranking with EPA, who submitted comments on the DEEP engineering. We queried about our response, and we were told by the DEEP air engineer, they would not respond and had no intention of responding. I'm sparing you more gory details of multiple other exchanges with DEEP. So when we receive the denial of our petition and the others on a procedural basis that seemingly did not exist, it is entirely consistent with the conduct of DEEP to ignore, obfuscate, obfuscate, and fail to do their job to protect the public. Thanks.
Dan Myers, sixteen Powderhorn Hill. Good evening. First and foremost, thank you to the Board of Selectmen for standing up for Brookfield and standing up to DEEP regarding the compressor station expansion. DEEP has unconscionably attempted to deny the public its right to participate in the permitting process through fictitious procedural technicalities that don't even align with their own published guidelines. Over the last several years, we've done extensive research into how the Clean Air Act really works, how states like Connecticut implement it, and more importantly, how communities like ours can actually win under it. The truth is, we aren't going to win this by simply saying we don't want it. We're going to win it by making honest technical arguments that DEEP and the courts are legally bound to consider. We've been working with experts in air permitting and enforcement, including Bruce Buckhite, who served as the Director of the U S EPA's Air Enforcement Division, and previously as Senior Counsel at the U S Department of Justice's Environmental Enforcement Section. Bruce's experience enforcing the Clean Air Act across industries gives us one of the clearest possible reads on how Connecticut must apply their rules. We want to reassure you that this fight is backed by a real strategy. We've recruited NGOs and experts and have new analytical tools with a plan that goes beyond what's been filed in petitions thus far, including the Stop the Brookfield Compressor Station expansions petition. We have arguments that are robust under the Clean Air Act's definition of best available control technology, and we're looking forward to presenting them during the adjudicatory hearing where the facts and the law can finally be weighed fairly, at least we hope. So again, thank you to the Board of Selectmen for continuing to stand up for Brookfield families.
Well, it's my understanding that this is Tara Carr's last Selectman meeting. And I just wanted to thank her for her service as first Selectman, as Selectman, to take the sacrifice of service and offer it to Brookfield. And so it's just wanted to let you know that it's appreciated. Same thing with the other ones, but this is your last one, so appreciated your smile and your, and you know, the way you conduct yourself and that. So I just wanted to stop by to say thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Nelson.
Okay.
Thank you, Nelson.
That's it.
That's it. Okay. All right, so next up on our agenda is announcements. The Coffee with the Community is scheduled for November twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. I will note that that's a week earlier than we normally do because we usually do it on the last Saturday of the month, and this, because that's Thanksgiving weekend, we decided to do it on the twenty-second. And it will be from nine to ten A M. at the new Brookfield Market in Delhi located at two hundred and two seventy-seven Wiskeneer Road. Please remember to sign up for the Spotlight Newsletter and the Everbridge Emergency Notifications at BrookfieldCT.gov where you can click on the subscribe icon. Vacancies on boards and commissions, one member on the Building Code of Appeals, and one member and an alternate member for the Commission on Aging, one member on the Energy Advisory Board, one member and one alternate member on Inland Wetlands, one member and one alternate member on Municipal Building Committee, one alternate member for Parks and Recreation, one alternate member for the Police Commission, one member on the Still River Greenway Ad-Hoc Committee, two alternate members on the WPCA, and three alternate members and two student members, which I believe we will deal with this evening on the Youth Commission. I'd like to make a motion to move the monthly financial update to after item A in the new items because we'll be addressing that, the financial update item, the one item in there at, in that presentation.
Is Marcia here?
Marcia is not here. So it does not really very much in the reports except for a motion, a financial motion to match what we're going to be talking about here.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on moving that? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous. So next up is a, it's a new item on the twenty twenty-five Lot sip grant solicitation for the Town Hall Campus Master Plan Phase Two. I'll go ahead and make the motion, and then we'll do a brief presentation. So the motion is that the Board of Selectmen approve the required town match not to exceed one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars coming out of the Capital Non-Recurring Fund to qualify to apply for the Lot sip grant in the amount of one point three million dollars and forward it to the Board of Finance for their consideration and approval. And upon approval of the Board of Finance, the letter of support will be sent by the Board of Selectmen. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, now, so before we get into discussion, let me invite Greg Nibowski to give us a brief presentation on what's going on here.
Good afternoon. Thank you, or good evening. Just to be clear on this request, it is only for the engineering services to spend the full amount if the grant is awarded. We've so far spent fourteen thousand six hundred dollars to get this far. It's a thirty percent design. That thirty percent design package is in your package, and I won't go through the details, but we've stopped spending money. We're going to spend no more money of that hundred and fifteen thousand that we might get approved until and only if West Cog and DOT approves the project. So just to be clear, we've spent what we're gonna spend, fourteen thousand six hundred. Now, what are we looking to do? If we can pull up Cynthia, the, just the master plan? We can't. Okay, so in your package is a Town Hall Campus Master Plan. It's called, the name of the project is Town Hall Campus Renovations or Master Plan Phase Two. Phase Two, if you look on your plan, was the, were the pickleball courts? Well, they're now complete. That was phase one that we did last summer. Phase Two, as we describe in the letter of support, is simply extending the Still River Greenway from behind the police station up around in between the soccer field and the Kids Kingdom to the parking lot on Pocono Road. That parking lot's, that parking lot's existing. It's gravel. We're gonna pave it, curb it, put in storm drains, and put in lighting. So that's what this project is. That's it. It's that simple. The grant deadline is November fourteenth, and if you look at, in your package also is the project solicitation application. And if you look on the last paragraph of that application, it says that this letter of support is required in the application. So this is simply part of this project solicitation for the project as I just described it. And that's really all I have to say. We did apply for this a year ago. We were denied. The Lot sip funding is much more competitive. In fact, the cog has strengthened their application requirements, and you have to do a lot more work than you did even two years ago because there's so mu, so much competition for this grant money. And honestly, our cog still is underperforming on the money that's approved by DOT to be spent. So they're really putting the hammer down on the towns to make sure if they get a project, we're committed to do it, not just get the funding and the money sits because we lose the money after a certain time. We've done very well on Streetscape Phase One, Two, Three. Five and Seven will be next summer. We're lagging on Streetscape Phase Four, all the way to the one that goes to Newberry Village. A very complicated story that is not the subject for tonight, but we've had some success and some disappointments in our Lot sip funding. So that's it, unless you have any questions.
Is this requirement to appropriate the money before we apply for the grant, is that new?
No, it was always there. Now, I'll tell you what I've done different now compared to other applications. When we applied for Lot sip money in every other phase, I've always combined the two because I was given an indication we had a high chance of getting approval. This time around, I gotta tell you, maybe it's fifty fifty. So I didn't want to spend all the time to get you and the Board of Finance in a public hearing for the full one point three million because we might not, we might not get approved.
Because we have to appropriate the whole amount eventually.
Eventually.
Eventually in order to, but it's, it's, it's the total amount and less what's gonna be for Lot sip.
That's right. That's right. So, and even as Steve Dunn and I talked about, even if we don't get approved for this project, the fourteen thousand six that we spent, we've got engineering design plans, and we'll apply again next year, or maybe another grant opportunity comes up. So we've done the survey work. We've got a thirty percent design.
And the percentage that's hundred and fifteen thousand is the same percentage that we would expect on the Lot sip. That's, that's, that's kind of standard.
So Lot sip pays for one hundred percent of construction, the town contribution.
Just for the final engineering.
Is for the full engineering design.
Got it.
Yeah.
And we have a good estimate for that, or is that a rough?
We, we do. By the way, the, for the, to spend the fourteen six, we got six, we got bids from six engineering companies. This was the lowest bid we got of six companies.
Okay.
Even to spend this fourteen six.
I got you.
So, hi Greg. Just to be clear, this phase two will only include essentially the parking lot where the glass recycling is and the trail connection.
All the way down to, yes, behind the police station, correct.
And the total estimated cost for both of those items is one point?
One point three. Yeah. It's, we have to add storm drains, and we've got to add lighting on the parking lot of Pocono. Also, by the way, as we've talked to Steve about, we're gonna move the glass recycling bin, the compost bin, and the clothing bin out of that parking lot to maximize the number of parking places. And our thoughts right now are to move that at the public workshop on Old Graysbridge Road if this project gets approved.
How, how did these two items trump what's coming in phase three?
Well, phase three, they don't. In fact, the whole purpose of a master plan is when you do every phase, it complements the next phase. If you look carefully on that plan, and it's hard to see, phase three is an amphitheater that will surround.
I thought that was next.
That would be phase three. So the idea is to first get the parking lot paved, and by the way, Lot sip money will not put in an amphitheater. So we're gonna have to find another source of funding. I will tell you, this project is barely Lot sip eligible because it's not a roadway. It's a trail. Lot sip does fund trail projects, but roadway and decongestion get a higher priority. So we can, we're only, we're using this Lot sip grant because it's eligible. Phase three will not be an eligible project because it's an amphitheater. It's not a Lot sip, a local transportation improvement project.
We're putting that amphitheater in the ten-year plan?
It's already, it's been there for years.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So the Still River Greenway grants wouldn't cover any portion of this trail, the connector?
What's Still River Greenway grants? We've applied, we've, we've, we've applied for DOT connectivity grants. We've applied for trail grants with the D E C D. At least two or three that I wrote, and we've been denied on all of them. So Lot sip is, I think, our best chance, if you will, to get this, get this done, this phase. And by the way, just to finish up the point, Tara, phase three not only is the amphitheater, which we still have to design, but it also puts trails around all of the sports fields. If you look closely and carefully, it may be hard to see, but behind every sports field there will be a trail extension in loops. It'll be nice when we're done.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, Steve, anything from you? Oh, you're on mute. Steve, you're on mute.
I'm sorry, Bob. Were you speaking to me? I can barely hear you and Tara.
Any comments or questions?
No, I don't have any questions. I'm very familiar with this, and I support it fully.
Okay. All right, then why don't we go ahead and vote? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, so the monthly financial update. Marcia was not able to be here tonight for, because of a personal matter. If you go, I went through the financial reports. They are, there are actually not a lot of new news in the reports themselves, and there was only one motion which was to, to move the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the Capital Non-Recurring Fund into this project. So that's why I moved it because I wanted to make sure that Greg had his chance to do that. So I'll make the motion on this item that, that the Board of Selectmen approved the proposed transfers between projects in the Capital Non-Recurring Fund for the year end twenty twenty-six, as shown in the attached report, and forward it to the Board of Finance for their review and approval. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, that passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda is the Board of Education Non-Priority List Project Grants. There are three motions on this. As background, the Board of Education, with a lot of discussion leading up to it, is starting to apply for what they call non-priority list grants with the, with the state. They've never done that before, so Casey has been taking a lead at understanding them, understanding what it takes to apply and so forth. So they're bringing, but they need approval from this board to apply for grants. So that's what this is all about, is them, us giving them the approval to apply for the grants. And there's a couple of things in that grant process that need to be dealt with as I talked to Casey, and these three motions will enable them to go make these applications. The, the first recommended motion is that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the Brookfield Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the roof replacement projects at Brookfield High School and Wiskeneer Middle School. Can I have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion. We did get a letter about this today.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask about that. First of all, it's in that email from Irene Correa, who's a member of the Municipal Building Committee. She's, she mentioned that Steve signed an engineering services contract with the lowest price in December of twenty twenty-four. Is that accurate? I, I don't remember.
Steve, did you sign the engineering services contract for this?
Was that brought before the board, that contract?
I'm sorry, Tara. I can't hear you. Could you move the microphone a little closer to yourself?
I don't think it, no, there it is.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Really loud.
The email from Ms. Correa says that there was a contract that you signed in December of twenty twenty-four. Did you bring that contract before this board?
I'd have to check.
That's a, was that funded under a budgeted capital item, Steve?
No, not on the town side. It would be on the school side. Play a flight for the grant.
No, 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 no. So the, the spending for the engineering on it, was that, was that just in the normal funding of a budgeted item, or are they spending? I'm a little confused.
If I remember correctly, it was funded through the schools.
Okay, well, that, that is a big piece of the puzzle here, but I, I think to, to her point in this email, she's not wrong. Like, the M B C should be involved. This is sounding a lot like the Wiskeneer wall situation.
It is. I, I, I agree with everything she said.
Yeah, I, I think that it should be tabled, just.
Well, I don't know that it needs to be tabled because our second motion in this three is to appoint the M B C as the, the Building Committee with regard to this project.
Well, maybe we just do that.
And I think we do that and, and then ask that they work with the schools to apply for this grant.
Exactly.
Or we modify this motion that's on the table right now to say in conjunction with the M B C, right? So that, that forces them together.
Well, this is the way the schools, the Board of Ed wrote the motion, so that's the way we put them in here.
Yep, I understand.
I, I just, I think that they do need to weigh in on it and understand the project before anybody votes on anything to move forward.
So Steve, is there a timeline on this that is, that if we were to recommend, do the second motion, which was to appoint the, the M B C, and then hold off on the other two, will that, will that cause a big problem with this project? Are you aware?
I don't know what the time is, but I don't understand why we would do that.
Greg has his hand up.
I would love to speak on this if I can.
Yeah, let's, let's invite Greg up to give us some of his insight because I know you've been involved in this.
I have been. So I've been on the, I was on the conference call with Casey and Dan Caldwell about a week ago on this very roofing project. The answer is yes, it's important, and I also want to give you another update because if we're gonna put solar on Wiskeneer, it's gotta be re-roofed first. So all that has to be done together, and that's why Casey and Dan invited me to participate in their project meetings. Having said that, today, the Veragey engineers were in the building for the first time.
Okay.
We spent about a week pulling out all of the school plans for all three schools out of dead storage. They're sitting in room one of four if you want to come see, and there's a table full of them. Veragey spent hours looking at the plans for Wiskeneer. They concluded that the, the plans that we were able to find, they cannot find enough of the plans from the original building to make a determination about the structural, the structure of the building. Therefore, and I talked to Dan about this, we, for us to even put solar on that building, there's gonna have to be a visual inspection of all of the roofs. I talked to Dan a couple hours ago. That is part of what this project would also do because you have to look at structural even for new roofing because you have to add new insulation, for example. It's a state standard. So it's important that we do this together, the solar project and the roofing project at Wiskeneer. So that's just a, so the time is of the essence from the solar project perspective.
Is the solar project a hundred percent go?
Well, there's a contract signed, which, the next steps now are for the engineering company to put together the design, and once they have the design, they're gonna submit a zoning application, and there will be three separate ones, and there's, and it's gonna have to go through permitting. It's gotta be approved by zoning before anything could be done. So it's only a go up until that it's still being studied and evaluated and plans are being created, so an application can be made to zoning.
Did that contract come before this board?
Yes. No, no, no. We, the motion was to proceed with the solar projects, and we delegated to Steve to sign the contracts.
So it's Wiskeneer, what else?
The parking lot at the high school.
That's a go?
No, again, they're all subject to zoning approval. And that, they can't bring an application of zoning until they have plans. They can't have plans until they have the specs on the building to know what, what they can and can't build. And if we have to add any more structure to Wiskeneer, for example, that's gotta be in conjunction with the roofing project because you're doing both things in, on that, on that building. Just to add some nuance, if this project, the one you're talking about, doesn't go forward or only part of it goes forward, we can, we, the Veragey project can recommend only doing a part of Wiskeneer. But if you don't get to a critical mass, there's many different roofs at Wiskeneer, it, we may do, we may do nothing there. So this roofing project plays a critical role on exactly what's gonna be done for solar at Wiskeneer.
So the, the issue I think at hand on these three motions is how solidly we put the, I'll talk into the speaker, Steve, so you can hear me, is how solidly we put the M B C in the middle here, right? Because that's the, it does say we're, we're establishing them as the Building Committee in regard to these roof replacement projects, and yet we then let the Board of Education be the ones who apply and accept the grants and authorizes the Board of Education to do preparation of schematic diagrams. And it's, to me, it's a little odd that the M B C isn't front and center in both of those. If I, I'd feel much better if we included them as part of these motions.
I agree.
Would you agree with that? We can make the motion.
Yeah, but they are in the second motion.
They are, but they're not mentioned in the first or the third.
No, because that's the way the Board of Ed wrote it. According to the rules of the state for this grant program.
Okay, well, I'm gonna, if you guys are okay, I'm gonna withdraw the motion that I made before. I'm gonna start with the second one, right, that says, I'm gonna make a motion that the Municipal Building Committee is hereby established as the Building Committee with regard to the roof replacement projects at Brookfield High School and Wiskeneer Middle School. Do I have a second on this?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm gonna adjust the first motion to say that the Board of Selectmen authorizes the Brookfield Board of Education and the Municipal Building Committee to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the roof replacement projects at the Brookfield High School and Wiskeneer Middle School. Could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
I was just gonna say maybe instead of saying B O E and, you say the B O E wants the M B C gives the green light or approves the, moving forward with the project. Because what if the M B C decides that it's a no-go?
Let me, let me amend my motion to say M B C approval is required to proceed.
That's better, I think.
It strengthens it. I agree with you. And can I have a second on the amendment?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, all, all in favor of approving the amendment?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, any discussion on the amended motion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Then on the third motion, the recommended motion, it doesn't say who is preparing it. So I'm just going to add that, that the Brookfield Board of Selectmen hereby authorizes the MBC with the assistance of the Board of Education in the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the roof replacement projects for the Brookfield High School and Whiskaneer Middle School. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
The reason I made that motion is I, I actually am a firm believer that the MBC should be responsible for schematic diagrams, right? And because that's who our building committee is, as a board. So I've said it that way, they might not like it, but it's, I think, the way we ought to stand up to it. You okay with that, everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Steve, you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next up is the Fire Service Grant. The, the Fire Service Grant is, is a dedicated grant program designed to strengthen the capabilities of the fire service organizations in preparing for emergency situations through comprehensive pre-incident planning. This initiative aims to improve financial support to the fire service to develop, upgrade, and implement effective pre-incident plans that enhance their readiness and response strategies. This includes funding for technology, training, equipment, and other critical components that contribute to the development of detailed actionable plans tailored to the unique needs and risks of the respective communities. Through the Fire Marshal's daily inspections, they create, update, and revise these plans within the First Due Software Application. And First Due is the name of the application, which gives the fire departments access to the necessary information while en route and on scene at incidents. If awarded the grant, the Fire Marshal would purchase two GTAC rugged laptop tablets that would be mounted in the vehicles and can be removed to perform these inspections and pre-planning in the field. So the recommended motion is that the Board of Selectmen authorize the Brookfield Fire Marshal to apply for the Fire Service Grant. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No. Sounds good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Okay, updates. Steve, I'm going to turn it over to you for updates on the cell tower and the Iroquois gas compressor.
Yeah, we don't really have an update on the cell tower. Nothing has changed in the last month. We're still waiting for all land powers to file an application, which they will notify us. We continue to coordinate and provide information to residents as they become aware of this and tell them what it is, where it is, what's going on. There's been no real change since the last update at the last Board of Select meeting. On the Iroquois gas compressor, we have filed a number of objections with DEEP, which have been turned down. Pam and Daniel talked about it a little earlier. In conversations with the town attorney, we are going to inhabit and cooperate on Save Our Sound where they have some very specific legal expertise. And then we are going to be filing jointly with Save Our Sound to make DEEP, in our opinion, follow their own rules and allow us to have an adjudicatory hearing where we would say, hey, we need the four things you want, the four things that we asked for. The electric compressors, better security, onsite staffing, better burns around the facility in case there is an accident. And I don't know if we'll win that, but it seems to make sense. There's strength in numbers and Save Our Sound has some expertise features and then working on it gently. So that's where we are with that. We're not going to give up yet.
So if I just were to clarify, we actually have already filed the appeal, correct? That's the?
In the courts?
No, no, not the courts one, the one that is the formal appeal.
Yes, yes, we filed the appeal.
And that was last week, right?
That was last Tuesday we sent it. Save Our Sound decided not to send in an appeal because they didn't believe it would change the DEEP position in any substantive way.
So in addition, so to be, to be clear, in addition to the, the appeal that we got a lot of letters about, we are now, now working with, say, Save Our Sound on a actual legal, legal matter.
Right, take them to court, actually go to court.
On this. So I think we're hitting it, we're hitting it twice.
Yes.
So I just, so many people write us letters, I wanted to make sure we were clear on that, so.
Yeah, thirty or forty, I think.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any discussion? All right, so the consent agenda is next on our agenda. The recommended motion is that the Selectmen prove items A through E on the consent agenda. There are no routine matters. There are two minutes for the 10-3-25 and public hearing and the Board of Selectmen meeting. There are no driveway bond releases. There's one excavation bond release and there's no employee changes.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, last on the agenda is a series of appointments. The first is the Capital Planning Ad Hoc Committee. And I'll make the motion and get a second and then I'll explain what's going on here. I'll move that the Board of Selectmen extend the terms of the Capital Planning Ad Hoc Committee members to 2-2-2026. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
The background here is, in the summer, we extended them till October 3rd. But that, they, with the thought that we would have that, the new ordinance approved and that the Board of Finance would have had a chance to approve their membership and that we would then afford new members to the permanent committee, that didn't happen. So, so the, this is to give them time to get, you know, get through the election, you know, do all their committee assignments in December. And then we timed it out with the, the new committee would take effect with the normal February appointments that we would do. So this is just buying them time to do what they need to do with an election right in the middle of it, so. And it didn't make a ton of sense to have an appointed committee that you'd then have to reappoint a couple months later. So, so that's what that's about. It's just buying a little time, so. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Parks and Recreation Commission, that the Board of Selectmen appoint Sarah Lynch Kincaid as an alternate member of the Parks and Recreation Commission with the term 11-3-25 through 2-2-26.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
So who is she replacing?
You have, you have the name.
Holly Carl?
Holly Carl.
And Holly was a registered what?
Republican.
So what is the constitution of the board if Sarah's appointed?
As alternates, it's, I think it was two and one. This is an alternate member.
So it doesn't matter?
It has to be two and one.
Yeah, it's different for alternates. In other words, you, majority representation for the full members than separate minority representation.
So how many alternates are there?
Three.
And there's?
This will make, you have it there.
Two, okay, so it'll now flip, it'll now be two Democrats and one Republican, whereas it was two Republicans and one Democrat.
Yeah, and this is just until February. We have to go through a whole appointments process in February anyhow. This is filling out Holly's couple of months. Yeah, no, that's, that's exactly what it was. And by the way, I talked to some of the leadership of the, of the commission. They urged her to join. She had been a prior regular member of this commission and had to step off because of commitment, personal business commitments. And they are welcoming her back. They, they're looking forward to having her back on the commission. They, they told me she was a valued member of their commission. So I was, good to hear that.
Yeah, she was a great member.
Yeah. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, the third is the Youth Commission. Now, this is a, it has an interesting motion. I don't think we've ever dealt with this one before. Ms. Hannah Kupka has left Brookfield High School and moved out of town. She was a member, a youth member of the Youth Commission. The Youth Commission leadership has been unable to reach Ms. Kupka to request a resignation letter, so we do not have a resignation letter. So the Board of, but we do have confirmation, she's no longer a student at Brookfield High School. So we need to take an action to adjust the membership of this commission, which is intended for students of Brookfield High School. So, so the first motion is pursuant to Charter Section C4-11B. The Board hereby removes Ms. Hannah Kupka as a non-voting youth member of the Youth Commission.
I'll second that.
Okay, Steve seconds it. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second one is to, now, there is, that leaves two Youth Commission openings on the Youth Commission for student members. One is vacated by Ms. Kupka's position. The other one was Vanessa Greenstein, who went to college, right? And those two openings have been done. And so the recommended motion from the Youth Commission is that the Board of Selectmen appoint Ms. Annabella Carr and Francisco, Mr. Francisco Carr.
Francesco.
Francesco Carr as non-voting youth members of the Youth Commission as recommended by the Youth Commission with terms 11-3-2025 through 8-31-2026.
I will second that and I would like to make just one comment on this. Tara, you would normally have to recuse yourself, but I would ask that you vote on this and I think Bob would agree with me that you can vote. My vote would be yes.
I think, I think we all, all can unanimously add them. They did a great job at the recent thing.
This is the best motion in the last four years of my life.
I love it. Any?
So we want you to be able to vote yes and Bob and I agree.
We want you to be able to vote on this one.
It's, we're finishing off on a high, high note. The town is lucky to have them.
Yep. So, so any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
So that's the end of our agenda. I would also, Tara, like to express, I mean, thanks for your service, both as first selectmen and as a fellow under-selectman on this board.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's great.
It's been an experience I will most certainly never forget.
I got you. All right.
Steve told me early on, you'll remember this, Steve, when you said that, you know, hold on for dear life, you're going to become the town punching bag. And.
Yeah, designated piñata.
Yeah, right, that's what you said, yeah, the piñata. You, 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 you were a hundred percent correct.
Yep.
But I wish everybody well and. God bless.
Well, thank you for your service, Tara.
God bless Brookfield, that's all.
Thank you, thank you so much. And unless there's objections, the meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all.